A prayer. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this city that we live in and love and for this region which is our home. We thank you for the many beautiful churches that have been established in our community and for those who work in them and take part every day in making the lives of all our citizens better. We ask thy blessings on those who depend on us, on those who love us, and those who protect us. We thank you for your love in the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, April 9th, 2009. I would like to mention, and I failed to do it last week and I should have, how proud I am of all our first responders, our emergency workers, and those who really helped clean up or anything else during the devastating storm I believe that we had last Saturday evening, Saturday week ago, in Murfreesboro. I want to commend our city departments for the work that they did in setting up the emergency command post and stabilizing the area and making it secure and for the help that they provided not only to our business owners but to our citizens and residents in the areas that were hardest hit by the storm. I realize that that was a difficult time for a number of people, but I do want to appreciate and thank those who worked together because I think our city does best when we do work together. So, I know on behalf of the council and all of us who work with the city, we appreciate the response, the response time, the way it was handled, the way it was done, and the help that so many of our businesses and residents received, not only from the city but from volunteers, people who came out to help. So, thank you. I really do appreciate that and I commend all who did work in that effort.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Lyons because he was on the scene right after the tornado and he stayed way late into the night helping coordinate the rescue and the power and all that. He had a long night that night also.
He and our police and fire and our codes people and everybody else who worked really did a very, very good job.
And making sure that all of us on the council were contacted and up to date as to what was going on throughout the night and the following day. Appreciate that, Rob.
Thank you. It was a team effort.
Good job.
Thank you. Council members, you have before your consent agenda. You've had an opportunity to review it. It's rather short tonight, but if there are any questions now is a good time or if there are no questions, I'll accept a motion that we accept our consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You also have the minutes of the meeting held on April the 2nd before you. You'll have an opportunity to review that. Are there any additions or deletions? Or is there a motion that we accept those minutes as they are presented?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to zone an area located north of Joby Jackson Parkway and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second on second reading. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington. Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to rezone approximately 20.28 acres from Boxwood Plantation Plan Development south of Salem Pike to single-family residential 15 RS 15 district.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for passage on second reading and ordinance to rezone an area located on the corner of East Sevier Street and South Highland Avenue to single-family residential 4 RS 4 district.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion in second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider recommendations of the planning director to schedule public hearings to consider rezoning an area west of Dill Lane to a planned residential development, PRD District, and to update amendments to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. During its regular meeting on April the 1st of 2009, the Murfreesboro Plan Commission considered and recommended approval of the following matters that will need to be scheduled for public hearings. The first is a zona request to rezone approximately 17.81 acres west of Dill Lane from RS 10 to PRD. The second is a package of update amendments to our zone ordinance. You will get a copy of the ordinance with your agenda materials for the public hearing.
All right, Ms. McKinnon.
I'd suggest May 14th.
May 14th. All right, council members, if that is your approval, is there a motion that we set a hearing for May 14th?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for adoption a resolution requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to the state treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act.
Mayor, I'll take this one. This is something we do every year. We have to turn in money to the state for unclaimed property and after it's been there for certainly the time, we're allowed to ask for it back. We'll still honor any claims that may come in, but instead of it sitting on the state treasury, it'll sit here.
All right, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll consider for adoption a resolution to approve applying for 2009 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, Recovery Act, COPS Hiring Recovery Program, designating a representative for such grant and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the United States Department of Justice COPS Office.
Mayor, we are seeking your authorization this evening to apply for grant funds that would hire police officers. The president's stimulus package includes this grant program which actually will fund a police officer's salary and benefits 100 percent for 36 months. At the end of the 36-month period, the city would be required to pick up that officer's salary and benefits, but we are recommending that we apply for this grant. Major Lester is the authorized person in the police department to submit the application online. It is due next week and we would request your permission to apply for these funds.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
What is the timeframe? I'm forward this, I know it helps us in doing it, but I want the council to realize and be aware, and which I know we are, that somewhere down the road, we're having to pick up this full tab sooner or later. What is that window? What is that timeframe?
Sure. It'll be three years from the time the officers are hired. Now, much like the other grants that we've had in the police department, we are not allowed to supplant local funds with these grant funds. So what that means is that they will take a snapshot of our organization to see where we have existing funded positions. In particular, we're targeting the 18 officers that we put in the budget freeze so we can demonstrate to the Justice Department that those positions were going to be funded by the city. We can now use the grant funds to pay for that, but as you point out, Mr. Bratcher, at the end of three years, this will be 100 percent a responsibility of the city.
Well, I think it's those 18 positions were some that we were anticipating anyway, so basically we'll get those 18 positions funded through this COPS grant.
Yes, sir.
If we're successful.
Yes, sir. And Chief Christman advised me, you know, the value to the city is over $3 million. Again, that's great for the three-year period, but we will have to pick up that cost at the end of the three-year period.
So, so make sure we're where, basically we're committing ourselves down the road three years from now to whatever, and we would probably, in that process, hire those officers anyway, but just to make sure that we're 100 percent aware of that.
Yes, sir.
In the ordinance where it's, or the resolution where it says fringe benefits, so does that include retirement, healthcare, all of those things that were, so that literally costs the city nothing?
Yes.
For three years.
At this point.
Well, and I think.
Three years is better than no.
But the point is, it's being paid through taxpayer dollars one way or another. It may not be absolutely, but, I mean, I would hope in three years, we're gonna hire, even through attrition, we're gonna have to hire more police officers. So even, this is even if we have people who retire, who move on to other places, this would help replace that, those voids we have, would it not?
Yep. We'll have to, you know, be able to demonstrate to them that we haven't replaced the local funding with the federal funding at the end of the three-year period and the police department is well-equipped to handle that.
We've done this in the past. We've had this program a few years back, if I recall correctly, Ms. McKinnon, and we've done this exact same thing and utilized several positions through this COPS grant before.
Well, this council had already, in this year's budget, planned to hire 18 new officers.
Right.
Mayor, if I may, it may be well to reflect in the council's discussion of this that because of the budget situations, the council had decided it was not going to fund those 18 positions in this budget year because of the supplanting requirements. We want to be very clear that it would not, we would not be obligated to fill those 18 positions before we would be eligible for the money.
Right.
This council decided and directed staff not to go forward with filling those positions and I think that would be the basis upon which we would be entitled to seek this money to fill positions that did not exist because we, we're not going to be able to fulfill that budget plan.
Thank you. All right, you have this adoption, adoption of this resolution before you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time we'll hear from the deputy city manager with regards to the proposed defined contribution retirement program for employees employed after June 30th, 2010. Mr. Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. We wanted to provide you a brief update this evening. As you will recall, on mid-December, we had a workshop at the city council to discuss the pension committee's recommendation of an alternative pension plan. That pension plan did not apply to existing city employees. It would only apply to city employees to be hired at some future date. Since that time, we have had individual meetings with you all and wanted to summarize what we heard from you individually and make sure that we were marching in the right direction. Through the course of the meetings, we heard that it would be very helpful to have information sheets distributed to our city employees explaining the alternative pension plan even though it did not apply to the employees who are currently working for the city, but we want to make sure we were doing a good job communicating what this new plan would be to them. So we would develop a handout to be distributed to the employees. Additionally, we would set up meetings with employees to provide information and to answer questions. We would certainly let the council know when those meetings would be held. We're targeting the Patterson Community Center, whose location where we've had other employee-type meetings, so we would look to do that hopefully in the month of May. But before we went off in that direction, we wanted to make sure that you concurred with the distribution of the information to the employees, holding those informational meetings, and if there was any other information that you would like, this would be a good time to share that with us.
All right, is there any other questions or information that you'd like regarding this program for employees employed after June 30th, 2010? That would be hired dates after, not those employees, but hired after. Anything else? What recommendation would you like for us to?
We want to, well, I guess I'm recommending that we would hold the employee information meetings. At the conclusion of those employee information meetings, we will share any other loose ends or follow-up questions that they might have with the mayor and council and then be prepared to discuss the pension committees, pension committee's recommendation again.
Have we decided on a certain package that we're going forward with? Have we come to that point or what are you gonna, what are you gonna talk to the employees about, options or, I mean, have we just, how far down this road are we?
As you recall, the pension committee recommended a defined contribution plan. That defined contribution plan included 3 percent to be contributed by the employee. The city of Murfreesboro would match that 3 percent, then the employees would voluntarily be able to contribute between 1 and 5 percent with the city matching 100 percent of the voluntary contribution.
So would you like a motion that we would accept this defined contribution retirement program for those employees after June 30th, 2010?
I think always wondering right now, if I'm not mistaken, is basically our blessing to go ahead and go forward with these informational meetings and then report back to us, so that doesn't really require a motion from us. It's just he's wanting to know that this is the direction they, we want him to continue to explore. Is that correct?
Yeah. He just needs to carry on.
Okay. We will get those meetings scheduled for May. We'll let you know when the meetings will be held and then we'll, we'll report back to you.
If the target date would be June 30th, that would give a full year before it was implemented, if I understand that correctly, if that's what the council chooses to do.
All right. All right, this time we'll have a discussion regarding criteria to be used in selecting the city manager and we'll get a report from our personnel director on executive search firms and city manager search. Ms. Mahan, thank you very much for being with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. If you would, on your desk tonight, you have a notebook that I prepared. It's entitled "The 2009 Executive Search for the City Manager." I would ask that you retain this notebook and each time we get back together over the next three to four months, that you would bring it with you and we'll have inserts to add to it as we go through this process. We're gonna try to work through this tonight. I hope it won't be too long, but we've got some decisions we've got to make and some areas we've got to cover in order to, to try to reach some type of timeline in order to get through with this project. Two weeks ago, you asked that I would find some consulting firms that we could go to, would contact maybe 17 or 18 of those, and after the responses came in, come back to you with a suggestion of five top firms that we would, if we wanted to use a consulting firm if that was selected. Also, you asked that I contact M Task to see what services they might provide to us and also to contact MTSU to see if some of the business and finance leaders there and the human resource director had some suggestions. Last week, as you recall, I did give you a packet of information which gave you an update as to where I was in that. I gave you a list of the firms that I had contacted and asked for their information concerning the recruitment guidelines and their fees and the procedure, how long it would take as a timeline and so forth, and also the letters I had sent out plus the notification to MTSU and M Task. And I'm happy to report that I did get responses back from those. We're gonna just go through all the tabs tonight. If you would, I asked that you brought, would bring back tonight your recruitment guidelines that I gave you last week from ICMA. If you've not already done so, if you would insert those in your notebook behind the tab entitled Recruitment Guideline, and that will save some reproduction cost. Turn over to the section entitled "City Council Responses." The council members were asked to submit to me a list of criteria, responsibilities, and just personal things that you would look for as attributes and so forth as we start seeking to fill the position of city manager. The first one is education, and as you can see in your notebook, that there were responses. There's various degrees there that that would be acceptable. Tonight, we need to, probably in order to move along, is to decide, you know, do we want a bachelor's degree? Do we want a bachelor plus a master's? Is a master's, not preferred, but helpful. Do we want to go into this dialogue tonight and decide these things so that we can take action? Because I need, I know even though that things are outlined in the charter as far as the responsibilities and duties of the city manager, we do have to have certain things in order to advertise.
Can we discuss this with the, if we hire a consultant, can they give us some guidelines and information?
I think we'll give them the guidelines.
Yeah.
For what we want.
I understand that, but.
So, I think if we could go ahead tonight and work through as many of these qualifications as we could, I think we could get through 10 or 15 different criteria. If you want to, otherwise, we can.
Ms. McKinnon, do you have any comments on that?
Mayor, I've had the opportunity, perhaps more than some members of the council, to look at the responses that were submitted by the consultants, and one of the things Ms. Mahan and I discussed was, although they were dissimilar in many respects, one of the consistent threads was the emphasis they put on the candidate profile, you know, what do you want? And I think that all of the firms expressed an interest in being involved with that. As Ms. Mahan and I talked about it, it seemed that the council had several options tonight. It could either take the time and just say, thanks, we're gonna go study it, we're gonna discuss it, we're gonna decide it on a tentative basis and finalize it if and when we have a consultant on board, or we're gonna make a final decision on some of these things and leave the others more open. So I think that you've got a range of possibilities that you could do with the information, but the consultants' desire to be involved with the criteria is something that was consistent in their submittals, even though it'll be the council's decision, not the consultants' obviously.
All right. So what are your wishes, council members?
Mayor, I would perhaps suggest that at least on some of the areas that we can work through tonight, such as educational requirements and specific experiences that all of us have listed in there, there are at least some of those hardcore, what I would call tangible, if you will, attributes that we could probably go ahead and work through tonight, some of the intangible attributes that we're, that some of us have listed that we may be looking for, maybe something we have to think about some more and get back to, but the stuff that you can actually look at someone's paper biography, so to speak, and gauge, I think those requirements, we might be able to go ahead and at least work through those tonight. And you want to start with a minimum of four-year college degree? A minimum of 10 years' work experience in government or other related fields? Is this?
We'll go in, we'll go over into the experience in just a moment. If we could just cover the education, I think, first and see if, you know, if you want more than a four-year degree then, more than a BS degree.
All right, for discussion, you have, and Ms. Mahan has provided kind of a listing there, so do you prefer bachelor's degree or master's degree? Is a bachelor's degree adequate?
I think gauging from looking, Mayor, at what all we've listed is that the consensus appears to be that a bachelor's degree is sufficient, but perhaps a master's degree preferred.
Okay.
Or at least helpful, if we want to use the term helpful for that. Say bachelor's degree required, master's helpful, because there is a distinction between helpful and preferred, I believe, in the job market, is there not?
That is true. That is true. Okay.
I don't want to box in too defined.
Sure, because someone may have experience that more than makes up for a graduate degree.
Why don't we consider lumping the education and experience together? I'd like to see, I'd like to see 20 years of education and experience combined in, in master's, if possible, as well as on the job.
Well, but if we look at that figure, even at the master's level, if someone went through on time, that's six years of education, then you're asking for 14 years.
Right.
Experience. Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting. You know, we need to aim high. We don't need 500 applications. We need 30 or 40 grade applications.
I don't disagree, but I think that, you know, six years, six years, four years of college, four years for a bachelor's degree, two years for your master's, and then saying 14, 14 years of experience, that's, that's pretty.
Take it down to 10 then.
That's pretty lawful.
Okay. I would even be willing to say, if there's a master's at five years' experience in some senior-level administrative role.
Okay. And then if there's not a master's.
Master's, then the time.
Say a master's in five and a bachelor in 10.
I think, I think that would be extremely appropriate.
And in.
Do you use extra experience to make up?
Senior management.
Yes. How about 10 years' experience in government, five years at a senior management position?
Plus.
A master's.
So that'd be 15. 15 total years?
14.
All right, so a bachelor's required, master's preferred.
Yep. I think if we're looking at the education, in 14 years, I think that's going, I don't know, I think that's gonna call out some very potential younger, extremely bright, aggressive candidates.
10 years' total experience with at least five as senior management.
Correct.
Is there a field of study that you want to specify that we've listed several here as a public?
I think we, I was hoping we could get to that next after we narrowed down the time frames. Let's look at this one at a time. First, if it's a bachelor's only, we're saying bachelor's in 10 years' experience, five of those at a senior management position. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody? If they have a master's degree, then the five years of experience, does that still need to be at the senior, at a senior management level?
If they ought to be, if they have.
I agree. I'm just making sure that I'm hearing what everyone else is saying, so I.
And these would be recommendations that we would consult with our consultants and they could help us also. Yes, we're gonna consult. We are consulting. We're consulting.
So, Ms. Mahan, I think we're looking at a bachelor's in 10 years, five of which is senior management, or master's, five years, all at senior management.
Okay. All right.
Is that where we're at?
What I want is, I want education, experience, and leadership, and I want it to be in demonstrable amounts.
Good.
So in essence, what we're asking is if you don't have a master's, that there's an additional five years' experience that you've got to show to make up for that difference.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take compensating experience. We'll certainly consider it.
And that's a 2.5 ratio that you're looking at, a master's degree being two years and you're swapping that off for five years' worth of experience in it. So I think that's a pretty good ratio to you.
You want to limit the bachelor's degree to public administration, business, business management, or government relations, or do you want to open it up to other fields?
My preference is that we limit it. We're hiring a specialist, we're not hiring a general practitioner.
So if you had somebody in an accounting degree, would you count that in part of the business school? All right. So public administration, business, business management, or government relations.
Okay.
That's pretty broad.
Mayor, some of us who went to liberal arts colleges didn't have those options. We had history or political science. I don't know that you necessarily want to exclude somebody.
That's why you're the attorney.
Who hasn't had the option of that. Would it be preferred?
I'm sure those people went on to get a master's.
Well, but they could get a master's in French unless you, and still qualify.
But then they're not really the people I want to interview.
But if we listed or related field to that, I think there are some liberal arts degrees, such as political science, that depending on what their experience has been.
Sure.
Might make up for that because.
Or economics.
That was going to be my next question.
I mean, I have a liberal arts undergrad degree, but yet I teach in the business college in the accounting department now, so.
Let's throw in economics and political science.
While we're at it. Let's throw in physical ed.
Well, I think if we just say related field, that's a related area of study.
All right. Let's just say public administration, business, business management, government relations, or related.
Or related field.
I say we hire the consultant, or quit.
I would be happy to do that.
If we do select someone that perhaps had an accounting degree, a law degree, or an engineering degree, would you require them to have certifications? For instance, if they got a degree in accounting, but not, they were not a CPA? Or if they had a law degree but had not passed the bar? Is there any stipulation there on certification?
I think we have to lump that into experience. You know, if they come with, with degrees that carry certifications but don't have the certifications, that's going to work against them.
Okay.
I would be more interested in seeing professional, advanced certifications that they've gotten with experience.
Well, and one point I would make to that, there are a number of companies that I represent that the vice presidents of their risk management areas have law degrees but have never sat for a bar exam, and they're extremely useful to have that in their fields. There are a number of employees who work in the business industry that have their accounting degrees but never sat for their CPA exam, but that field of study and experience still takes care of what they're needing. We're not asking someone to be an accountant or to legally represent us in this situation. I think that's what we had, Ms. McGannon.
No, we're going to say those certifications are not required.
Okay.
Just if they've got the degree that goes with it and the experience, I don't think we necessarily need to make sure that they've actually passed a bar exam.
No.
We're going to count the legal field.
And the same thing for professional affiliations, if they are, you know, members of different organizations, then that's helpful.
We really can't give weight to those kinds of things. You know, we're going to have to see the full body of their work history.
True.
Great.
Okay. On the next page, we're going to get in more. I know we've already discussed experience as far as years of service and so forth. Is there any certain fields or anything like that? Like if they've had five years of business experience, are you going to require that it has to be in like a CEO or chief operating officer, senior management, department heads? Is there any certain level of criteria that you want to place on that?
We could use our consultant for those particular criteria, I would suggest.
I think a minute ago, we used the generic term of senior management. Perhaps the consultant could help us get a grasp around defining that for this, because I think there may be individuals in the private sector as well as the public that might fit this, fit this bill.
Okay. All right. Another area on the next page, in order for you to be thinking about things that you're going to be asking the consultants or whomever you go with, is the skill levels. It's working with the media, community relations, technology, long-range planning, budgeting, personnel management, team building, public speaking, writing, labor relations, and so forth. Do you want to have any discussion on that tonight?
I think it's safe to say that all of those attributes that you've listed are all, are all acceptable, and I think that we have to look at having a very well-rounded individual that has got to be able to do all of them and all of them well. I don't know if I could sit down, you know, just looking at these, I think we probably could list 100 that they would need to have. But I think those are all very good starting points to have, have those.
And I think if we get the first ones right with education and experience, these will pretty much follow, follow those attributes, I hope.
Mayor, Ms. McGannon's wiggling her pen at us.
Waiting patiently for recognition whenever it suited the council is.
Something about liberal arts, I guarantee.
That's about some people who went to different schools.
Absolutely.
Ms. McGannon.
I think it might be helpful if the council discussed what was on the top of the third page, whether they were going to require candidates to have had experience in government, and if so, at which level. The question of whether or not that's going to be a prerequisite, I suggest, is a fairly fundamental one that you may wish to address, whether or not as an employee, an elected or appointed official, and whether local government, state or federal government. I just suggest it'll be something that would be a pretty primary question for consultants, so you may want to have some discussion tonight.
I would, my thought off the cuff would be no to have in governmental experience, because, I mean, if, this is pie in the sky, but if Warren Buffett applied for this position and decided that he wanted to come down and help manage the city of Murfreesboro, then I don't think we would look at him and say, no, you don't have governmental experience. So I would like to see it be more of a broad.
You want it to be preferred?
I mean, I think that would be fine to have it preferred, that would go into that experience factor that we've talked about, but I don't think it has to be necessary to say that, you know, obviously, if we look at someone who's had 10 years of experience in the governmental field and has all of these prerequisites that we've talked about, I think that we're going to put more weight to that than someone who has been in corporate management with no experience. But I don't think we can limit it just to say you have to have been part of a municipality.
Ms. Mahon, would this be one of those situations where we would use the term helpful or preferred? Is there distinguishing factor in this, in this situation?
Probably preferred on that.
I would prefer to have somebody with local government experience. And the reason I say that is because all of us have worked in local government, and all of us have dealt with county government, and with state government, and with the federal government, and there's certainly a different timeline and different sensitivities involved. And one of the things about local government is you've got to have a very broad vision and a broad picture. You're not very compartmentalized. I mean, it's, the way this city has worked is working together. And you don't look at somebody else and be, compare what they got and what I got and say, well, I didn't get anything, so I'm not going to cooperate, and I'm not going to do that. And I see that a little bit in other parts of government. They're, they're very, you know, they've got blinders on for their particular, either they're in the energy department, or they're in consumer affairs, or something like that. And their sensitivities are very good in those areas, but they're not good across the board. If you ever got the federal government, or the state government, or somebody that sends you from a consumer affairs, or from energy, or whatever, they don't have much sensitivity across the board. They got sensitivity in what they're doing. So I would really prefer a local government experience at some level. That doesn't mean they had to be there forever. They may want to, they've been at the state level or county government, and they want to come back to local government. That's fine. But I'd like, I would prefer to have somebody who's been in local government.
I think you don't. Say preferred then instead.
It needs to be preferred. Tom and I and some of you all have served in the TML boards and whatever, so, you know, it's really good, you know. Nobody takes care of home like you do. So preferred, local government people, they're going to take care of home better than anybody else is going to ever do. I've seen it.
Yeah.
So Tom is absolutely correct about that. And preferred, you know, you may not pick a person that meets that criteria, but it's preferred.
And we're leaving, we're leaving the door open to those who may have served in the private sector as well, so.
Leave it as flexible as you possibly can, whatever you do, leave it as flexible as you possibly can, and.
Exactly.
But I'm going to tell you now, nobody takes care of home like you do. Rob came here from New Jersey. He's a New Jersey boy. He's, he's conformed well, he's been here well, he's done a wonderful job.
Well, he had a swing by Florida, too, I think.
Well, maybe so, but he's still a Jersey boy.
I heard he was born here, is that not right?
He's, he's done well, so.
Just like everybody else who's come to Murfreesboro from somewhere else, they've always said, haven't I lived here long enough to be considered local? Haven't I really?
I was told that you can't be considered a true Murfreesboro unless you were here before Nissan, in Rutherford County.
Central High School.
Is that right? Swam a lot.
But we need, we need to leave our options open to where we can get the best candidate possible, and.
Right.
And that person.
Y'all are all out.
Conformed to us.
There's another important topic on page three at the top, and that is the size of the entity. That's really something that has come up as I have reviewed the different consultant firms that's sent information back in. You know, you may have been a city manager or a deputy city manager of a town that had 8,000 people, and that is not Murfreesboro. So we need to discuss, you know, the population range that you're looking for as experience, maybe the size of the budget, and the number of citizens that, that, you know, are made up in this. So I need some discussion on that as guidance as to what you're looking for.
Ms. Mahon, will we make that sort of as a double preferred? In other words, preferred local, and then additionally on top of that, preferred from a municipality of size X or with an annual budget of X dollars? Is that how that would?
You certainly could go to whatever degree of specificity you want. I mean, you may decide that somebody who's, who's been an assistant under somebody in New York City would not have relevant experience, so you may want to have a minimum and a maximum on that. It's whatever the council thinks is most likely to lead to a good fit.
Well, that's where we get, though, into using the preferred as opposed to not required, though, to give us that flexibility.
Right, and.
But if we could have a range that you're looking for as a, as a guide.
I would throw out as a threshold, given the size that we are, that their experience comes from a city of not less than 75,000 people.
And the budget probably not less than 60 or 70 million.
And comparable services. Because the other thing is, you may have people who don't have a police department or a fire department or something like that.
Well, we're looking for somebody to take us from where we are today into the future for the next step, if you will, to the next rung, and we need some, we, we want someone who has experience in where, you know, where we are and where we want to be. So I think that's important that.
I heard 70, 5,000, 60 million budget, comparable services.
There's 70, and I just threw that number out there. Do we need to lower that to 50 or 60,000 to make sure that we, we have a?
Just say preferred.
I think you could say preferred, but, you know, that don't mean you won't get someone with 50,000. I don't have a problem with that number at 50.
And Vice Mayor Breacher, I think you went ahead and touched on the next topic, and that was on growth, that you're looking for someone perhaps with, has been with a government entity that's had experience growth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's an absolute must.
Okay. All right. Anything else we want to add to the experience that we can think of tonight that we've not covered? Okay. All right. On the next page, on page four, is the personal attributes. I think as you look through those, of course, you know, everybody wants to talk about someone that's engaged in.
Yeah, let's go back to the skills, Ms. Mahon. We didn't.
I got it.
I think we said all of those, but we might want to have some primary emphasis on.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we want somebody who's a good steward for taxpayer dollars, somebody who's accustomed to being accountable.
Okay.
And obviously, somebody who's not willing to get paid a whole lot of money to do that. We're not going to have a multimillion dollar bonus package attached, so.
But don't perish it.
Somebody's got to be a good steward and accountable, and with a salary range possibly where we are now at the deputy, or a little bit greater, depending on level of experience.
Mayor, one of the things that makes Murfreesboro unique is we have a very large university here. I would, I would think in work experience or skill sets, someone who has had some experience working with the quote town and gown, or the university and the city and the, so, you know, that's a great big part of our community is MTSU. I think that, that should be considered.
I think that's very good. I'd say, well, a lot of towns our size don't have a university our size, and they, some will, some won't, but I think that's a good point. But I think the, obviously, the technology, the planning, the budgeting, the personnel management, the team building, the town and gown, the labor relations, those are the attributes we possibly look most for. I'm not necessarily that media or community relations, Mr. Schaffner does such an outstanding job with that that we probably don't. Is he already gone?
So good, he's already gone. Chris, come on back.
Okay.
All right. Now, I think we can move on, Ms.
Okay. We'll talk about the personal attributes. Of course, there's a whole list of suggestions there that, that came in from the council members. Attitude, dealing with stressful situations, community skills, team building, and so forth. I think we'd all agree that those, we would look at the candidates that come forward and expect those. Any comments?
I personally don't think there's, there's an attribute on that list that any of us would want to not have.
True.
In, in who fills this, this position. You know, some of the things, if you wanted to put them in categories together, we may have said the same thing differently, but I think there are nuances to the way they're listed, and I personally think that every one of them should be things we should, we should be looking for.
True.
I think that represents a good collaboration of all of our input as to who, or what we're looking for in this role.
And of course, on page five, it's just a summary with, you know, someone that's had success, can deal with stress, diversity, and problem solving, because we certainly have that on a day-to-day basis. All of those. And behind that, you'll notice that I have included copies of the responses from each of you. If you'd like to read those, they're there. I had just summarized them so we could talk about them in a group.
Ms. Mahon, I.
If you look. I'm sorry.
On personal attributes, this is something, just, I think we've got several things that we've got on here that are good, but I, something I would think would be good is we need to have someone who, I don't know, I'm going off what my wife tells me sometimes, but we need to have someone with good listening skills, if we could.
Okay. That's very good. Very good.
Well, that leaves us out.
What'd you say?
Did you speak to you directly as a husband or as a councilman?
Probably both.
Did he say something?
If we're ready to turn on, go to the recruitment profile. One of our council members had asked that we take the job description that we have for the deputy city manager and incorporate that into that, first of all, under the essential functions, is to follow the guidelines outlined in the city charter, articles seven and eight, and the city ordinances. And of course, if you look at the city charter, which is on the next tab behind that, it, it defines all the responsibilities of a city manager. So this has been given to you just in a draft, just for discussion, but I think that's very good. Also, all the suggestions that you made in some way or another, we have incorporated into this recruitment profile template. This doesn't mean it's one we're going to adopt or go by, but it's just a, a draft for discussion purposes only, just to give you some idea of everything that we currently look at when we look at the job description of our deputy city manager. Any discussion on that?
First of all, I'm very pleased you've provided that for us, and certainly you're very perceptive in picking up, I think, what all of us are certainly laboring over to try to have here. And Mr. Young, you'll see that must have experience working with town and gown. So Ms. Mahon has done an excellent job, I think, of putting this together for us. If you would just update that, if there's anything that we've mentioned that we can use that recruitment profile. If the council at some future date would like to incorporate that, we could vote on that, I think. We're possibly not ready to do it tonight unless you feel like it's.
Now, let me add those things to it that you suggested tonight, I think.
Okay.
Okay. All right. After you pass the city charter, if you go over to the M task response. And as you know, M task is a, a service that, an agency that is, provides technical assistance, and it is paid for through the revenues of the sales tax. And so the services that they provide, should we choose them to be our consultant for this, is free. The only thing that we would have to pay for would be for the advertisements that we place in any types of magazines. For instance, they would advertise in ICMA newsletter, the Tennessee Town and City, and the Tennessean. They would receive the resumes and applications, they would go through them, they would screen out those that aren't qualified. They would prepare a list of questions that could be asked of the applicants, or the candidates that you'd want. that you'd want to bring in for interviews. And then they would do a rating scale to let you know how to compare all the candidates. They would follow up with interview questions. They will not make a recommendation to you as to who you should hire. That is your choice on that. We would have to pay for the advertisements, make the offer of employment, and we would have to send the rejection letters. I would ask that if you are, if you could decide that you wanted to use M Task to do this service for you, that you would hire an outside company to do the reference checks, the background checks and so forth. From the information I have read going through the recruitment profile and the guidelines, it says that the background search in all areas is so important, and I think that that's one that we would, if you elected to go with M Task, that you would hire an outside company to do that. The timeline would be at 90 to 120 days, and they would be, they would put us on the top priority as far as service and so forth. Now, that's just M Task. We'll go on and we'll talk about the other companies that responded, and then you can decide which way you want to go, because I know we haven't reached that point. If you'll turn behind the tab for the consultant's response.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayhew. Right under the introduction on M Task, you'll notice that, I think ranked by population, they have shown the types of hires that they have participated in across Tennessee. Of course, they would not be going outside Tennessee, but I think you can see that they have dealt with a number of different positions, several in some instances, and also, as most of us would know, you know, there aren't cities our size in Tennessee outside, Clarksville is about the closest there is. We're sixth largest in the state, Clarksville's fifth, so, you know, I think they've done an outstanding job. I wouldn't have any problem recommending M Task. I've never heard a complaint from M Task on their searches. I have not inquired, but we could do that if we wished, to use in that service that's funded through the state of Tennessee and has offices in Nashville, Jackson, Memphis, Knoxville, I think, and maybe in Kingsville.
UT Martin.
So I think they would have a very good handle on the type of person that we may be looking for.
Mr. Joe Darden with the, with M Task, would he and Mr. Richard Stokes would be the one conducting the survey if you elected to go with M Task?
Well, Ron and Don, one of them lives here, I believe, or two of them, both of them live in Rutherford County. I think one of them does for sure. All right, go ahead with the others. I didn't mean to, I hated to interrupt, but I wanted to go through M Task.
Sure, sure. Okay, if you turn over under the consultant's response, you'll notice that I had eight of the consulting firms to respond. I sent out 18 requests with a letter as to what we wanted in a four-page response. I had eight of those firms to respond, plus M Task. And then you also asked me to select the top five that I felt like off their responses that would be the top five, and they are listed also on the page. I have gone through, and under each tab, you will see in the back, I have listed them by alphabetical order. There's not any preference order. I have summarized them. You'll see on top, there's a summary, one-page summary to save time tonight to kind of give you a brief synopsis of what their response has been, and we'll go through those so you can kind of get familiar with them, and then you'll decide, hopefully, you know, if you want to do a telephone interview with the ones after you study this, or whatever your recommendation is tonight, that if you wanted to do a telephone interview with two or three of them, and then you make up your mind, or whatever your direction might be. The first one that we'll talk about is the Colin Bayinger and Associates. This is a company that was established in 1996. They're headquartered in Palm Beach County, Florida. It's a small firm, but they're nationally recognized in local government as a recruiting firm. They take only a few clients at a time, and they focus on providing high quality of service. In the past five years, they have completed 55 city and county management searches with, that's averages out about 11 per year. They have experience with cities with population ranging from 654 up to large public utilities that they serve with 2.4 million. They have not conducted a search in Tennessee. I'm sure they'd be glad to do that. They have a, the firm's key practice, they say that the most important to recruitment process is conducting an extensive reference, public records, internet and newspaper archives, and background checks. The work is not completed until a client is satisfied. I thought that was a very good attribute to say that until, they may send you five people that they select that they would like for you to consider, but out of those five, if you don't, if that's not the person you feel comfortable with, then they will go back and they will keep on until they find the person that you are satisfied with. We, and just general comments that was observed from looking at their response, they had a good presentation and the statement of strategic partners in that they worked with 25 independent consultants. They gave descriptions, detailed descriptions of three cities as example of work performed in the past. They paid attention to detail, and they had an excellent flow chart that went along with theirs to let you know how they would move if they were selected as your consultant. The timeline for, from the time that you gave them a contract or commitment until finished, they estimate to be 90 days, and they have a fixed fee of $20,000. And of course, none of these would include the cost to bring in any candidates or their spouses for interviews. That would, all of them, we have to pay for that. But they gave us a flat fee of 20,000.
And that did include the background checks?
Yes, that's true. Their response is behind this sheet, so I would ask too, that, I sent it to you this afternoon, if you had time to read it, but if you did not, it is there for your review. Any comments on that company? Any questions?
Did all of them, as you know, include the fee for background checks?
All of them did, except M Task.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the Mercer Group. The Mercer Group was established in 1981. They're headquartered in Georgia, and they operate nationwide. The firm has 31 members who are located throughout the United States. They have conducted 115 searches for city managers, administrators, assistant city managers, and their administrators since the year of 2003. If we average that out, they're doing about 19 per year. And they have done some searches in Tennessee. They did one for Oak Ridge for the city manager, and they also did a city administrator in White House, Tennessee.
I noticed M Task said they did Oak Ridge also. Could have been a previous.
Some people, that's true, that some people have done it in different years, and we found that to be pretty consistent, too. They may have used one firm at one time, and then the next time, they didn't go back with that same firm.
Right. And the, or the city manager selected at one time may have gone on to a different job somewhere else, and.
That's true.
If the research, I mean, if the consultant hired them, they might have told them there's another job with more pay, better position available somewhere else, and recruited them to go somewhere else.
The Mercer Group does provide a large range of services, and they're in varied fields, so however you view that, they don't specialize in just recruitment for city management or municipalities. As you can see there, I've shown you just a few of them, they're listed in their report, but they do special districts and nonprofit. They do what they call unbundled search process, public and private experiences and so forth. So they've got a number of different services they provide. The area of concern that we felt like with this company, that maybe their work was a little bit too varied, rather than, you know, all, having too much on the table at one time, that could be a problem, perhaps, and not sure of the quality of work if you are spread too thin. 19 searches per year could be an overload. That's quite a few searches, you know. On the positive side, they responded well to our questions, they included a very good, very good charts, and the timeline presentation was good. They indicated that they would complete the search in 90 to 120 days. Their cost to do this service would be 15,000, plus expenses not to exceed 55%, which would be roughly $8,000. And so there'd be a potential of 23,000 if we went with that firm. So that would be the Mercer Group, and they are located in Georgia. The next group is the Par Group. They were founded in 1972. They're located at Lake Bluff, Illinois. They have a staff of 16 principal consultants, six associates. I'm not sure, it didn't indicate if they were all full-time or not, so I can't tell you that. In the past four years, they have conducted 65 city manager and deputy manager positions for smaller cities. They do have experience in working with universities in cities, they have universities located within them. They did two searches in Tennessee. I did call them, and they responded back and told me that one was in 1994, that's not real relevant, and it was with the Nashville Metro Housing for the Deputy Executive Director, and then in 2001 in Lakeland for the city manager with a population of 6,800. They gave a group, and you'll see it attached on their response, of a number of cities that they had done, you know, different searches for, and most of those ranged anywhere from 45,000 to 91,000. The Par Group will conduct an onsite interview with each of you. They will come in, they'll sit down, they'll listen to you, they'll hear what you want in a city manager, so that they have a really good understanding before they begin the search. They will conduct, of course, the background checks, the reference checks, criminal court records, credit, any kind of printed media that might be available, and motor vehicle checks. They prepare the interview questions and all the procedures, because they, I've found through most of these companies, they say that it's best to have the same questions asked of each candidate, so that their responses can be graded and you can judge each on the same basis. You're not giving them varied questions. And so they said they would come in and they would work and establish what questions you want to ask and what they feel in as a consultant is pertinent and needs to be discussed. They would coordinate the travel arrangements for the candidates, and if their spouses came with them, then they would coordinate that as well. They would guarantee that if neither, the city or the candidate was satisfied within 12 months, that they would conduct another search with only the cost of the expenses involved. They would not charge another professional fee. So I think that's important to know. The timeline again was 90 days or maybe a little bit more, and the cost on the Par Group, though, was on the high end. It was 30 to 35,000. So do you have any questions on the Par Group?
Any questions?
No, sir.
All right, let's go ahead to the next.
The next one is the Salvin Consulting Firm Management Consultants. They are, they were formed in 1991. Robert Salvin is the owner. They're located in Georgia. It's a small company. They have a staff of seven full-time employees and six part-time employees. They recently completed a search for Franklin as town mayor.
Manager.
Well, they've got mayor on here.
Manager.
Okay.
They didn't hire the Franklin town mayor.
Okay, all right. And the, all searches include significant public and employee involvement. We have found that some of the companies, you know, do involve the public and the employees, and some do not, and so it seems that this company does. They believe that the best prospects are those that are happily employed and do not typically respond maybe to all your advertisements that's listed in classified ads or sometimes advertisements. So they do do headhunting, and they have a database that they go to and they, you know, bring candidates in to apply from that database. They said that they would spend considerable amount of time coming into Murfreesboro to gather information. They'll do a, the recruitment profile for you if you so desire. They will, of course, supply you with supplemental questions and send information in for the finalists. They'll supply any kind of rating and sourcing and any kind of information you need to help you in this. They'll conduct the background checks, the, all the experience, personal references, verifying education, degrees as stated, criminal history, civil court records, and driving records. They'll come and meet with you when you actually sit down to interview the candidates. They will come and be present at that time to assist you in that, and then they would like to come back 30 days replacement and conduct a session with the council to establish the performance goals, and maybe follow up in a year to see how this person is doing. The areas of concern with this company was that they put a lot of emphasis on their own contacts in the related fields and own experience. That, you know, could be limiting if they're working a lot out of their database. Also, they did not show how many city manager searches they had performed, and how many cities were like Murfreesboro. We didn't, we didn't see that in their response.
Slavin did not?
Uh-uh.
They talked about, have placed city manager during the last four years, including Asheville, Fort Collins, Fort Myers, Newark, Bellusia, and Wichita, Kansas. I mean, that's just listed in there, that fourth paragraph.
Right.
Sue, on the one that came there.
Okay. Do you think in your opinion?
They didn't tell you total, but they gave you examples.
Right.
I think of those.
Could you request some more specific information from them on that, or?
I mean, they did Franklin, plus Asheville, Fort Collins, Fort Myers. It's a pretty impressive list there.
Okay, all right. Their expenses may be a little bit excessive on the onsite interviews due to the phrase that he said he'd spent a considerable amount of time getting to know the community, so that might be something that you want to think about, or if you did choose this company, you'd want to talk to them about as to how long they could visit in our city and bill you for that. Their timeline was 60 to 90 days or more, and the cost is 13,640, plus expenses not to exceed 55%.
Okay.
About 23,000, probably.
So they're in line with basically all of them are in that 20, 23,000.
Most all of them are running somewhere around 25 to 30,000, something like that, just a ballpark.
Yeah.
The next group.
They got a book going.
Do you have any questions on the, on the Salvin Group?
Chicago's had it really good.
Any questions?
Did they, because of their, their small staff, did they talk about start dates and timelines?
We've not gotten that far.
Okay.
Okay. The next group is the Waters Group. They have 30-plus years of experience. They have offices in Dallas, Austin, Seattle, and Cleveland. Now, with this company, they require that we designate a project manager to serve as one person that they can contact in order to always find out where we are and any information that needs to be passed on to them. They develop a comprehensive recruitment brochure, which I think, you know, they would say that they wanted to really to speak for us, and it would be, include an organizational chart, budget information, operating reports, community organizations, and current information about our city. So they want something they can print up a glossy brochure and send to their, the people that they would be contacting. The responsibilities of the position, you know, they want that, they want to hear from you as to what you're looking for, and as we've talked about that earlier tonight, they would conduct all the reference checks and so forth. They would provide the interview questions and the rating. One thing that they were, they have, and we can talk about that in a minute, they have certain trademark guarantees, and the Waters triple guarantee. They talk about commitment to remain until the city is satisfied with the candidate that we select. The executive recruitment guarantees for two years. The executive recruitment guarantees for two years, that if the employee voluntarily resigns, or if you terminate that employee for cause, that at the first year, there would be no professional fees, expenses only. The second year would be fifty percent of the professional fee plus expenses. Also, that they will not solicit any candidate selected under this contract for any other position while that candidate is employed in your organization. Now, whether you go with this company or not, I think that would be something to remember to put in your contract, so that you wouldn't take someone, put them in that, and then maybe three or four years or five years, have them pull from that database and place with another company. So I think that's a good thing to remember there. They will, they also came back, and we'll talk about, you know, how your thought is on this, they said they would match the lowest comparable proposal price. So even though their price is, has a cap of twenty-six thousand, if you have another company that comes back and says they'll do it for twenty or twenty-three, they will price match, so...
Does M-TAS count for that?
I don't think so.
You always get what you pay for if you love it.
I don't think so. Also, they use what they call the Career Navigator, and it's an approach for comprehensive in-depth screening and evaluation of candidates. Areas of concern might be the division of trademark guarantees, and by using the navigator tool. Not sure if there's other implications there, maybe services that they want to go into to develop, you know. I don't know what your thinking is on that. Ms. McGannan, you have any thoughts on that?
You can see their description of the behavioral assessment that that is on the third page in the second paragraph. That's what they're saying they would do to determine competency, would give this a trademarked screening device.
Also, not sure what your thought should be, you know, concerning the price protection and possibly for recruiting all kinds of service. We did notice that at Fort Myers, Florida, that the Waters Group was used for the assistant city manager, and another company was used at a different time for the city manager search. There again, we don't know whether it had the same mayor and council or whoever made the selection. It could have been someone else that just liked the attributes of a different company, but we did want to point that out to you. The Waters Group charges eighteen thousand five hundred included in that, is three onsite visits to come to Murfreesboro, and we would have to pay the expenses for any flights and traveling and so forth in addition to that. Also, the printing for the brochures and so forth, we'd have to pay for that. They said that the total expense would not exceed twenty-six thousand. Now, if we wanted additional above the three onsite visits, you'd have to pay fifteen hundred dollars per day, or if you wanted a video conference, if someone could not come, if it was not convenient, and you preferred rather than flying them in here, that you would first do a video conference. This company did provide that at the cost of six hundred dollars per candidate. So that would be an option.
That sounds a whole lot higher to me. We do video conferencing all the time, and it doesn't cost anything.
Yeah.
On the Mac. Go to our chat.
Those details we've worked out.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, you see these consultant responses. I think we had eighteen that we sent out, and eight responded, plus M-TAS. And you had five that were kind of gleaned by the Personnel Director who picked those out and put them down in alphabetical order. So you have M-TAS plus these five. If you wanted to limit the hire to that particular group, or I'd be interested in hearing what you prefer to do.
You know, Mayor, I think it's kind of a bit of irony. Ms. Mahon listed the five in alphabetical order, but it seemed like the best one seemed, they seemed to gradually go down as her areas of concern got greater as we went through the five. Just to throw it out there, I personally think that M-TAS would be a, certainly a very valid way to go. Or of the five that she sent us the information on earlier today that we've just gone over, I think, actually, the Colin Bazinger and Associates. The detailed flow chart, I think that they give, gives a really good outline of the method that they would proceed in, and the overall caps being, costs being capped with the expenses included, I think are positives. And given that, putting M-TAS in and the other five, those six, my two preferences would be either M-TAS or the Colin Bazinger and Associates firm.
Questions, Mayor? If we used M-TAS, we would still have to hire someone, or would we, to do the reference and background checks?
Yes.
I would recommend that you do that to protect us. I think that would be money well spent.
I think one of the weaknesses that Ms. Mahon listed about one of the groups was that they were spread too thin. I'm concerned that M-TAS falls into that same category. I just don't see that, I know that M-TAS does a wide variety of things for the municipalities of Tennessee. And they do not list any specific experience that causes me to believe they're going to do national-grade searches or have been doing, national searches for cities and communities as the size and the diversity of Murfreesboro. So they don't get as high marks for that. I've sat through numerous classes of theirs, and they've played a valuable role in educating me to be a councilman. I didn't keep you, I forgot it all. I think Mr. Gilli's assessment, as we went down the list, they got somewhat weaker, but I would tend to say the first, second, and fourth groups, those three. I think we could win that down probably with a phone call to each one and a few questions, probably to two of those organizations to pick from. So that would be, my suggestion is that we consider identifying three based on cost and service and experience and timeliness.
That's Banzinger, Mercer, and Slavin.
Yes, sir.
I think the good thing about the Slavin, that we could have a reference to call Franklin and see how that process went.
Yeah, there's something in Slavin's documents that says to me they've done this. I guess one thing that intrigues me there, I've spent a fair amount of time in Asheville. Asheville's just a little smaller than us in population, but they have a spectacular tourist draw there, and they are a wonderful city in many respects. So if they've been able to play a role in that, I'd like to hear a little more from them.
Okay, all right.
They're probably, right now, my inside choice of those three.
Yeah, Slavin, I believe, would be my choice, but I'm certainly open. And I like the size of the cities they apparently have dealt with, and they've gone pretty far afield, so I think the candidate pool would be pretty expansive.
And Mayor, I would tend to agree with Mr. Edwards. I, I remember one else too, but I think the third and the fifth are the two that we could probably go ahead and cut from consideration.
To eliminate the third one and the fifth one tonight.
I think that's consistently what we're saying.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
I can go along with that, yes, ma'am.
All right, in order to move on for time's sake, and I know, Mayor, you're going to be out of town for a period.
Have you heard he's having a grandbaby?
I did hear that. Ms. McGannan, do we need to go ahead tonight and try to get a time for doing a conference call with these consulting firms so we can narrow the field down?
I think the council needs to discuss what they want staff or the council to do in making a selection. If you want staff to get more information, if you want staff to set up a call, if you want to ask a member of the council to work with staff to try and, you've got all sorts of possibilities there, and of course, staff will do what we want us to.
I guess my thought is, let's identify battery of questions to ask these three organizations. And the questions that I would want to know about is if you were contracted with in the month of April, how soon would you start and when would you contemplate delivering an acceptable body of applicants? And my second question would be to hear them talk about the, a general conversation with references about similar cities that they've done work for.
Okay. Do you want to send me your questions, then, that you can think of after you leave here tonight? Email those to me, and I will put them all together.
Yeah.
And then we'll arrive at a date that we can all meet and do a...
I think if you could help us possibly by generalizing, when they would be able to start?
Okay.
If we gave them a commitment in thirty days, when would they start?
Okay.
And how long would it be before we would see applicants? A winnowed list, a reduced list of applicants?
Mm-hmm.
And then how long would it take to finish the process based on some interviews with applicants, some small group meetings with applicants for either the public or whoever else we wanted to have there, and then some decision?
Okay. I think that was one thing I did see in one of them. Some of that might depend on you and how long you take if you wanted some type of other interaction with this.
They would have some, they would have some experience, I believe, working with that. The other thing that I would like for you to do is there, in these three proposals, that's Banzinger, whatever their name is, Mercer, and Slavin, they've all indicated places where they have placed people. And I would like to ask if it's all right with the council for you to call either that city mayor, possibly, or someone who could comment anecdotally upon the success of that company in the search that is mentioned.
Okay.
It's just a background.
I'd be glad to do that. I thought about it before tonight, but was waiting on direction.
Right. Would that be all right with the council?
I think just some, that kind of general information, and then you can relay it on to us.
Right. And that would be as to, did they in fact make this hire? Were you satisfied with the hire? Is that person still employed?
Would you use this same firm for another placement?
Okay, very good.
I think it'd also be nice to know what, you know, if they would help us and let us know how the financial process went, if it was as quoted, if it was as delivered.
Okay.
Sure.
So if you could ask those five or six questions of as many of those as you could get some information from in the next two weeks, possibly.
I was thinking about ten o'clock Monday morning.
Ten o'clock Monday morning? That's the banking business these days, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Work all weekend.
Ten to two.
So, Mr. Edwards, if it's ten o'clock Monday morning, we'll be the council's representative to make sure all that is done, is that correct?
Ms. McGannan, do you have any other questions?
Shh.
All right. All right, so let's just...
Ms. McGannan.
Mayor, I think it might work smoothly if Ms. Mahon sent out to you the sort of two things, what she's going to follow up with the firms and what she would follow up with the elected officials, and then ask you if she's missed anything, and give you a really short turnaround time to respond if you think there's a problem. That saves the seven of you from having to come up with this list and her waiting for that, but just give you an objection or an addition, and if, get a short turnaround so she can get started with the inquiries both to the firms and these cities.
Would you be willing to do that, Ms. McGannan?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you. All right. So you'll update our recruitment profile, and then you'll work through those questions that you're going to ask of the firms, and then questions that you'll ask of the towns mentioned in their, each of their proposals.
I will.
And that's with the Banzinger, Mercer, and Slavin.
I will, be glad to.
Is that all right with the council?
That's very good.
Would you like to have a vote on that?
Not unless it's necessary, not unless Ms. McGannan tells me I want to vote.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
If we chose, choose to use M-TAS, we would have to plug in something for the background check, some fee for that with an outside consultant. Would that be a thousand dollars?
I don't know. I would need to chat with the company and find out.
I don't think that we've...
I think we've moved on.
Okay, we've moved on, all right.
Right, we did not keep M-TAS on the list.
We love them, and they're vital. We're going to do this in different ways.
Not their pettiness.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Mahon. You did a tremendous amount of work here, and I'm sure the whole council would like to thank you for that.
You're here.
Thank you very much.
Amen.
Thank you.
We made an excellent decision when we chose to hire you.
Yes. What was that little lady's name?
All right, anything else on the discussion of hiring the city manager? If not, then we'll go to consider any beer permit applications. Ms. Wright, back to work.
Mayor, we have one tonight. They have not quite finished their building codes inspections, but we expect those to be done very shortly, so once those are complete, we'd like permission to issue this beer permit. It is for onsite consumption at a location at twenty-nine eighty-three South Church Street.
Is there a motion? Move or rule?
Second.
Motion second. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, you have before you a revised list of the statements for possible payment. Is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Some of it.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. All right. At this time, we'll consider any other business from staff or the council to come before the council, and I believe I have before me a recommendation from our city manager to appoint Mr. Rick Hardisty, who is Vice President and General Manager of Lewis Brothers Bakeries, to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Chuck Phillips on the power board. Vice Mayor, would you like to make that motion?
I would, Mayor. I move that we approve the recommendation of the city manager.
Second. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Any other business to come before the council? If not, you're adjourned.